Good evening. We have already called the meeting to order before going into executive session. Now we're reconvening in open session and welcome. Per Governor Baker's orders, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, the public will not be allowed to physically access the school committee meeting. Members of the public can access the meeting via Montague Community Television Broadcast. And also, the tape will be on our site by tomorrow for people to view. Just an aside to my committee, my internet connection has been becoming unstable a bit as the evening's gone on. So if I freeze, Cassie, please, as vice chair, or Jennifer, as secretary, you could please lead the group until I come out of the frozen position. Thank you.
Sure.
If you are in here as a member of the audience, could you please remember that we need the video off and the microphone off? Thank you so much. Okay, looking at our agenda, it is a special meeting, so we're going to go right. There are no particular important events therefore, or a separate superintendent's report. We're going to go right to the business and operations report because we have an update on repair expenditures and funding sources for the district. Joanne.
Do we want to do that? As I go down my report, or do you want to do that here?
We can do it under the business, the one item, if that works fine. We had just noted it in this area, but we can do it any way you choose.
It's up to you, Joanne.
Yeah, why don't you go through your report and then I can just fill in.
Jump in when we're there, okay?
Okay, sounds good. So the one item this evening is discussion of reopening plans, updating on repairs and other progress, and considering if we want to vote on changing a learning model. So Brian?
So in terms of an update from the weekly COVID public health report from September 23rd of the 11 towns that we look at, we have less than five cases in Greenfield, less than five cases in Orange over the last 14 days. There have, and all of the other 11 towns that we look at had zero cases in the last 14 days. The state has 4,833 cases in the last 14 days. That's an increase of about 400 over the previous 14-day period. Franklin County itself has had only seven cases in the last 14 days. So in our region, the data continues to be favorable. I'm proposing a timeline for on-campus learning for the school committee to consider tonight. While we're addressing maintenance on the HVAC system, we are proposing the following timeline for admission of smaller groups of students to attend school in person, eventually to have the district in a full hybrid learning model as the HVAC maintenance is completed. My recommendation is that on, as of October 20th, that we bring all staff as well as the life skills in transition students from the high school and middle school, as well as the resource students from Sheffield, be brought into the district in three rooms that have been identified as having enough return of air for October 20th. When we combine that with the air scrubbers and air purifiers that we've purchased that should make those rooms healthy enough to have an increased number of people on campus in those areas. I'm also recommending that as the maintenance makes progress and we get evidence of completion of various buildings, that as of October 26th, that we look at bringing more students on campus. If all of the district buildings were done, that would be the point at which I would like to most move into a full hybrid model for the entire district. I will say that at this particular point, it is most likely, and again, all of this really is contingent upon the completion of the maintenance on the HVAC system, that it would be more, most likely that the elementary schools will be completed before the high school is completed at this early stage. And early indications are that those buildings may be completed potentially within two weeks' time. They are already beginning work on Hillcrest today. And that may, that work may be done, including Gill Elementary School, may be done within the week. So then we'd just be waiting on Sheffield. So I would assume that by October 13th, that I would have another update to give to school committee on the progress of the maintenance, if not having emailed that progress to the committee and sharing it with the public. So our ventilation systems evaluation reports on each of the schools, I intend to send out in a communication to families tomorrow, along with the action plan that we've created with the HVAC contractor, so that we're very transparent with the public about the measures that we're taking to ensure that the air quality is much improved in all of the classrooms. The ventilation systems evaluation report will be, will include the air return rates for each of the four buildings in the district. To this point, in the, in the course of that action plan, we decided instead of looking at filtration being retrofit on our existing HVAC system, Heath Cummings, our facilities director, and Joanne Blyer, our business, school business administrator, decided to look at air purifiers and air scrubbers, which we had purchased a little bit more than $80,000 worth of these devices. And we have, almost all of them have already been delivered to the school and are being prepared to be put into the classrooms. These air filtration systems, I will also include the specifications in the public release, so people can see the various qualities that they have as, for the purpose of suppressing, if not killing, particular viruses and pathogens, as well as removing dust and other elements from classrooms, which may help those who have allergies, or maybe susceptible to dust and other things that might have existed in places where the building had not been in that great of shape, and therefore didn't have that much air circulation to begin with. So the summary will be included in that report that I will release to the public. And then, as the repair work is completed by our contractor, we will share that updated report, because it, once they complete an individual building, they then go back through every area of the building, and they again have to give us a measure of the air exchange rate that they did post-maintenance to allow us to be able to assess whether or not their work has, has been sufficiently completed. In terms of funding considerations for those repairs and for the air filtration system, I, this would be the point at which I'd ask Joanne and to step in, and I wanted to say a special thank you to the towns for their consideration in these huge projects. Once again, you know, it's, it's not just parents and, and teachers and food service, maintenance, custodial, and members of the admin team that work together as a team. It's really nice to be in a town, be working in a place where the towns really pull together to support these major issues. So Joanne, if you want to talk about that, please?
So I had heard from the Gill, or the Irving Business Manager, that they had funding available for us for the high school, for the number of students that they send, about $22,000. And then recently, I reached out to the Town of Montague and the Town of Gill to see if they had funding in their CARES Act that could be used to help us with these ventilation repairs and for the air filters. And they immediately put that on the agenda for the Town of Montague. And I went to their meeting last night, and we had about $150,000 that would be allocated toward Montague buildings, or Montague's share of the high school. And the select board voted to authorize up to $175,000 for us to spend for these purposes. So that's really great news. I mean, it, it was like Christmas. So I reached out to the Town of Gill today, and I spoke to the town administrator, and they're going to put this on their agenda for the select board meeting on the 13th. So that will be the same day as your school committee meeting. So I will try to be in two places at once, which is a little easier this way. So let's see what I can do.
Thank you, Joanne. And thank you again to the towns for being so considerate and cooperative, and helping us to move these projects along as quickly as we possibly can. Thank you also to Jamrog for really making us a priority. You know, it's nice to have a business in town that's working with us to try to resolve these issues and come up with solutions to very complex problems, some, in some cases, which have existed for decades. In, does anybody have any questions, anybody in the committee have any questions about the proposed timelines at this point? Jennifer?
Okay, so y'all know I'm turning off my video because I'm, I don't have the greatest internet connection. I have a question about the HVAC work before we move on to the rest. There was a number, I think we might have talked about it, the last meeting of two air changes per hour would be the goal. I'm just curious where that number came from, and how we decided on that number, and, and if we're going to retest and get another report once the work's been done, so the public can see that there's been a change.
Yes, so I added at the last meeting and also confirmed today that part of our contract with Jamrog is that as they complete the maintenance, they do have to go back and make sure that they're, you know, they have to give us another report on those air exchange rates. So we will get one, and I will post that one for each school as we receive it, and indicate to families and to the employees of the school district that the report has been updated as we receive them. The number two comes from Ashray, which is the HVAC organization. It is a target for air exchange. And in particular, we looked at that particular target also because the, the air purifiers and air scrubbers work at their peak efficiency when there are a minimum of two air exchanges per hour in the space. And some of them cover, cover a space of up to 3,000 square feet. Some of them are fairly large. So we needed to make sure that they were going to be effective by making sure that we had that level of air exchange. So there were really two places. One, it's, it's the target of the HVAC Association, but also is something that allows that technology that we've purchased to help clean the air to run most effectively.
Brian, were there any more details about the timeline that you wanted to add?
So again, because everything, you know, I'm looking at several different groups. If for some reason, we reach October 20th and we're able to get our staff and those three priority populations into the building, if we are at a point where maintenance has not been completed such that we could go to full hybrid or have a larger group, that we would move to phase two, which would involve therapeutic programs and SEL students, which would be about another 17 or 18 students for the following week. If for some reason, the maintenance is completed across the district, that I would want to give at least a week's notice to families and to staff to indicate that any, any group of kids that we'd be bringing in, we would need to communicate directly with those families or be communicating with the larger district in cases where we're going to hybrid, to full hybrid. If we're in a situation where the elementary schools are done, and we could conceivably bring in all students in full hybrid in pre-K through six, it's all really going to be dictated by the maintenance. And if for some reason, we get maintenance reports that certify three buildings on October 25th, or October 24th, whatever the last day of that week is, then I'd, I'd look to be making a change or communicating a change for about a week away, so that families can plan, and that will allow for schools as well as families to be able to communicate with one another about, you know, bus pickup times, what days, what cohorts students are in, so that families will have an idea rather than, you know, giving them less notice to be able to make adjustments to childcare and other obligations that they might have going on. Again, but everything is really going to be contingent upon the maintenance and what's completed. We do know that we have at least 18 spaces at the high school that have enough air exchange for our, our technology to work effectively. So if for some reason, none of, and I, I would be very surprised, but if for some reason, none of the elementary schools are ready to have students in, then we could bring that other group of 17 students into two more rooms at the high school, which isn't ideal, but it does get them on campus and allow us to provide them with services that they really can only access minimally, if at all remotely. And then, you know, look to make, put out a communication about going to full hybrid if the COVID-19 data in the region stays close to what it's at now, which is really minimal or statistically non-existent transmission in the recent region. And the maintenance is completed, so that we have enough adequate space that I would, I would make a recommendation with about a week's notice that we'd be going to full hybrid. But having this space from this meeting to October 20th allows the district to be able to, you know, tomorrow morning, we'll be putting out a posting for all of the, if the school committee decides to take the recommendation to go with the timeline, for all of the additional positions from food service to paraprofessionals to custo, additional custodial and maintenance to people to supervise the nurse waiting rooms. There are a lot of positions that we need to post for, and I'm also going to be doing an all-call to the district at the recommendation of other superintendents, that there may be some folks in the community that are interested in applying for these positions and might not necessarily go on to school spring. So I'm also going to make the recommendation that we post these positions on the website, is there may be some parents or older brothers or sisters in the community who might be in a different situation, that this might be, these, these jobs might be good employment opportunities for them and have another opportunity for us to pull members of our own community into our schools and make a contribution, in many cases, to the schools that they graduated from. And so that's, that's about it, because, you know, in terms of the details, everything really is going to be contingent upon how quickly that maintenance gets. And we have, you know, good news on the money, on the financing part of things, good news in terms of the beginning of the process, that they're already started, they've already started the work on two of the elementary schools. And we should have an idea, certainly by the time we, our October 13th meeting, but again, that they're estimating that these elementary schools could be done within two weeks' time. And so that's, that's very exciting news, that, you know, it's the first time over the course of the last six weeks that I've been able to make a recommendation to school committee differently than we have over the last three meetings. And so I do appreciate everybody's patience.
Bill?
I have two questions. One is, Brian, when you reference K to six, you're really referring, that would apply mostly to Gill because Montague's elementaries are stopped at five, and their sixth grade is in the middle school. So you're not, are you proposing to have those children attend the middle school, or were you really thinking, referencing the fact that Gill has sixth graders in Gill? And then secondly, I just want to address the, the money issue, which would be that without the exceptional efforts by the towns of Irving, Montague, and perhaps Gill, we wouldn't have that money?
Absolutely. Absolutely. And I, I think again, a reflection of a community that is definitely together to support its children. You know, it, that, that's just exceptional, and for it to be so thoughtful, so thoughtfully done, and attentive to the processes that need to be followed to make sure that the money is earmarked for what it's supposed to be earmarked for. So, you know, thank you again to the leadership of the towns for their consideration. As far as the sixth grade bill, that's a great question, and my thought, I haven't shared this with principals yet, will be, we have an administrative meeting on Friday, and so if Joni's tuning in, she might, she might be seeing this. But yes, if, if, the reason I said K through six is if we are in a situation where we can get the elementary students in, and then the priority populations into the district, that we should also be looking at considering getting the sixth grade on campus at Great Falls Middle School, so that we can be a clean K through six, even if we can't get seven through 12 in the building, because we do have spaces with the level of air exchange that we need. It might just mean that we need to be creative, so I need to have an understanding of how many classrooms there are that would need to come in. And then, being able to move people around a little bit, if necessary, for a temporary period of time, while we wait for the remainder of the high school to be complete. And I, I do think that that will be possible. If it's not, for some reason, then we may consider going K through five, just for the purposes of equity, and then bringing back six through 12 when the maintenance is completed. But, you know, we'll have that conversation as an administrative team, and I would actually appreciate it, Bill, if I could provide an update to the committee at our October 13th meeting, relative to that question, so that we, you know, we will have to have a clear idea. But I do believe that we have enough spaces at the high school building to be able to do that if we're just a little creative about it. And that gets our, you know, really our most needful learners, many of the secondary students, you know, this is good news in the sense that if we had one building that was going to take longer than every other one, the high school is the better one to have that than, say, Hillcrest, which would be devastating if we couldn't get our, you know, our kindergarteners, first graders, and preschool kids on campus sooner.
Jennifer?
I have a question about the priority populations. So in the, in the summer program, I know that they were kind of reaching out to each family and asking if they, if they were going to participate or not, and they still had sort of an opt-in, opt-out. You know, some of, some, I'm hearing that they very much need to be back in, in person, and others are saying it's working really well, both staff and parents. So I'm just wondering if they're, if they're still going to have that level of option, or it's going to be primarily, we want you to come back, staff and families?
Yes, so the expectation is for staff to work on campus as part of my recommendation, starting on the 20th. For families will still have that option, and I know Diane Ellis has reached out to the families in the first phase and has identified those families who, no matter what, will stay remote. I'm, Diane, I'm not sure if you wanted to speak to that. I didn't see you on the, I didn't see you in my Hollywood squares, but if you want to speak to that a little bit more directly, I'm not sure if I gave enough detail there for you, Jen. But within that first group, Diane did reach out to those families.
Right. Is there, I'm sorry, Jennifer, is there another question that I could be helpful on?
So like in the summer, it was sort of starting with staff that had not really volunteered because they're being paid, but had said, I want to come and I want to teach, and I want to be one of the first ones back. Is there, so it's just all staff, there's no, there's no opt-in, opt-out? Is, I'm just wondering, because the priority population's going to be less than the full hybrid, you know, the full, all grades, you know, going back. So I didn't know, I, I know you're recommending that everybody go back. Sorry, I, I just thought that that worked well, and the staff that were doing the summer program were very happy to be there. So I have a couple of, you know, questions and concerns about requiring all staff separately than, than just the folks that are teaching remote populations.
Yeah, part of the reason for it is one, needing, the teachers really need to be present to collaborate with one another, but perhaps more importantly, because there is a strong likelihood, say, for example, on a snow day, the commissioner has given us license to not cancel school, we can have a remote day of school. So even if we don't go to fully remote again, because let's, let's just, let's daydream for a moment that we have no issues with COVID-19 that arise that require us to go fully remote again, and we're able to stay in, at least in hybrid for an extended period of time. One, we still have remote Wednesdays, and two, we, we could close it at any given time. So what teachers have as access, access to here on campus in terms of the technology, and I thank all of those parents who have really provided an enormous amount of praise for the effort of teachers and paraprofessionals for their support. It is really clear that the teachers have done a phenomenal job of increasing the level of rigor substantially from the spring closure. And while I know that the, there are also issues that have been shared in many of those emails with this model, we're hearing that, and we definitely will evolve. But for teachers to be able to have access to that technology while there's just a small group of students on campus is really important, and they've actually requested as, as part of our conversation, that we make a change to some professional development time. So they have agreed that they, it would be beneficial for them to begin working with that technology in person, and to be able to get increased tech support when they're on campus. They have greater access to the technology support, they have greater access to their colleagues who might be more proficient with the technology, all of which is going to be of benefit to them in making the delivery obstruction far more effective. So that, those were really the primary reasons, Jennifer, that I discussed with the teachers, because they did ask those questions. So, and they came back to ask us about, you know, in that first week while they're on campus, can we dedicate some time? And we do happen to have a half-day for the district that week, so we're going to look at opening up that time for additional technology work for them.
Jennifer?
So along that same conversation about the all-staff, I'm just concerned that teachers are going into empty rooms and teaching remotely, and then that might force them to, say, take a leave because of childcare, when they're really just teaching to an empty room and teaching on the computer. So I just, I guess I want to see a little bit of flexibility, so that we can make it work, so that we don't have to have our teachers take that step back when they, when they otherwise could continue teaching.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't have an immediate response to that right now, Jennifer. I think we've been really advised against that by the school's attorney, and there are a lot of different reasons why to advise against that, one being that we're a small district, and it's really challenging for us to be able to provide levels of flexibility. And the FMLA and COVID relief acts provide really clear parameters for people who need to make decisions like that, and I think we should probably live within those parameters, because if we, you know, the, we've provided flexibility in through the summer and in through the start of school while we didn't have answers, but now we have answers, and we can make this work.
Cassie?
So I do want to put this out there. I have mixed feelings about the, the whole lump sum of K through six, going back all at once. I apologize for my dog, they get very excited during school committee meetings. But one thing we're not hearing about, and, and I know it's been brought up a little bit, is the priority population, because ultimately, like, we have to be providing tape to our students. And, you know, I'm a teacher myself, this is scary. I sympathize with the concerns of the teachers, by all means. I, I do. It's a scary time for me. If I was called to go back tomorrow, which I could be, that would be frightening for me. But remote learning has worked very well in my house for two out of three students, and I would be completely okay with them remaining remote possibly for the entire year. One bright, bright spot in this is I have seen the resilience, the resiliency of not only our students but our teachers, because we have amazing teachers, and this has been difficult for everyone. But I think we do really have to look at, and again, I don't want this to sound bad, because happy teachers make happy students, and I want everyone to be happy. And again, I don't want this to sound bad because happy teachers make happy students and I want everyone to be happy. But at some time, like the priority populations that are not being provided FAP.
We lost, did we lose Cassie?
I, I think we lost you, Cassie.
Of course you did, I was saying something really poignant.
I know, I know, you built up to it and.
What was, what was the thing that you missed, where did I?
It was for those, for those priority students for whom we are not providing FAP, it was basically your last sentence or two. Could you repeat that?
Yeah, I was just saying that, you know, teachers are bending over backwards for the priority population to make this happen. But for some kids, through remote learning, this isn't possible. And so I think for those kids, it's especially important that we figure out a way to get them back so that we can be providing that.
And so Jennifer, there's one more piece that I would add to that too, that's related to priority populations that I had not discussed earlier. Which is that as, as the, for some of those priority populations, they have mainstream classes and this will provide them the opportunity to also attend those classes. Whereas they couldn't if, you know, we provided the option for one of those teachers to be able to continue to work remotely. So that's another part of the reason that, and that's also part of FAP is giving them access to the least restrictive environment. And if we were to have teachers home, we'd be making that environment inadvertently more, more restrictive at that point.
And I'm not sure about the end of one of Jennifer's original questions. I think it might have been something Diane might be able to tell us a bit more about, I think the question Jennifer, was it about? The priority populations, the students, the families still have the choice to keep the students remote if they so desire.
Yeah, that's, that's clear. I, I think you answered the question, yeah.
Okay, thank you, I just want to make sure.
Diane wants to say anything else?
Anyone else have a question for Brian or any other information, Cassie?
I just want to clarify as well, there's a number of different groups of students that could be considered a priority population. And I think we also have to consider that some of the special education students we may want to see go back are also medically sensitive. And so, you know, it, it can't be a one size fits all. So perhaps, you know, it's more of, and I'm just using this as an example, but more of like a therapeutic classroom that goes back and maybe if the life skills have more students with. You know, medical issues or medically sensitive, maybe it's not safe for them to go back, that sort of thing.
Diane.
Cassie, thank you for raising that point. Actually, in conversations with our parents, with our nurses and obtaining releases to speak with doctors. Of our medically fragile students and the advice of council and of course, you know, looking at making sure that our plan is sound with the board of health. We would be prepared to move forward, our responsibility is to provide FAP, so to provide that free appropriate public education. To the student and so what we don't want to do is exclude a student who has a chronicle, chronic health condition. Because of, you know, because of concerns over COVID, so what the advice of respective parties and, and again, engagement with the family. Is to look at how to do so safely, so how to sort out what is a medical condition, what is something we can anticipate and expect. For a student to experience as part of their disability or medical condition. And then how do we make sure that we ensure safety with our staff, with personal, you know, the PPE equipment? And, and again, a very solid healthcare plan, so. And we do have families who have opted out to, you know, I think as Jennifer had said and others, is that we have some families who feel like. Given the circumstances in their child's life and their family, that they are electing to do remote. And that may mean that we are not able to deliver services in the same manner and. There's going to be recognition through a COVID-19 special education learning plan that we are adapting the service delivery model. So there's, there's a lot of expectations that the state has as well as it makes sense in general with families and kids. Is that these things are talked about and negotiated because our responsibility again is to provide the service in a way that. Feels acceptable and appropriate to the family.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mike?
Just want to make it clear that this timeline has not been officially adopted or agreed upon, but it. We are working on it together, this is not a timeline that we're trying to impose. This is a collective effort at this point. And as Brian stated, but we just want to continue to make clear, it's contingent or, I mean, it's contingent a lot of things yet because we haven't agreed on it yet, working towards it. But it's fully understood that it's contingent on the safety issues that we've discussed and agreed to. If, if the issues, if the metrics aren't where we've agreed they need to be, then nothing's going to happen. We're not looking to force a solution or a timeframe on anybody. We're working totally closely together on figuring out all the issues that, that still need to be figured out because there's a million different things. But we're working, we're moving forward together and working together on making this timeline work.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike, and if I could add one thing that I failed to add, I did, and I know that the committee is aware of this, but other folks might not be. That I did run the. This plan as well as the report that I'll release to the public by the board of health and they did not, they did not have any concerns. At all, so I appreciate the fact that they, they reviewed it quickly this morning. And got back to us in a reasonable time so that we could say that they were at least in the loop on, on what our plan is and what we're seeking to do. And favorable to, to that plan.
Thanks. Anyone else? Jennifer?
On an unrelated question, I know that the pandemic committee has met extensively and this may have been discussed there. But was there any thought given to shorter days? Because my understanding is that they'll be eating lunch in the classrooms and therefore taking off masks, which is. What basically happened at Bay State where they had the outbreak because someone was asymptomatic, came in, had lunch in the lunchroom with some staff. So the concern is sort of why are they wearing masks all day, if then they're going to take them off to eat? So I'm just wondering how the pandemic committee. You know, but what was discussed and how they felt that that would be. Safe to do so and if anyone thought about doing shorter days and sending home a bagged lunch and a breakfast for the next morning. Or something like that to start and then phasing in as we have the science and the data.
We, since I've been here in the course of our planning, with the exception of a little bit of conversation around potentially providing services for half-days. With Diane and putting together her proposal for priority populations in a, in a three-phase. Process, which was prior to having this, the information about the facilities and getting the technology in that we've gotten. And part of the reason that we really didn't have very much of that discussion. Across the board is that we still have to meet time on learning requirements. And I'm concerned about the transition of, you know, take, having to take students home and busing them home is cutting into the time that we have our educators. Under contract to be able to stay connected with them, so then you'd be sending a student home from school. And expecting them to get back on screen, so no, we didn't, we didn't raise that, one of the other things Jennifer that took it out was. We were able to work with Kuzmeskis around the safety of the buses and take a look at the total number of students that we have on the buses. Which would have been the primary reason that many schools would have done multiple runs and it does not appear as though right now we will have to do multiple runs. To be able to get students on campus, so the, the, we have to try to work with. The safety protocols and one of the things that we still need to refine a resolution to is how we're going to be feeding students. Both in the hybrid model as well as at home and the cafeteria folks and Heather Holmes have been very helpful in brainstorming ideas and we'll continue that conversation. Tomorrow and Friday.
Yeah, I think a larger conversation needs to happen or not because largely some may say that the numbers. In Franklin County are low because of compliance with masks, so when you're taking masks off to eat, that's a concern. So, yeah, I understand the time on learning, you know, there's no easy answers here, but I just wanted to hear about that discussion.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, with that in mind, I would like to suggest a motion, if it's acceptable to the committee, that I will entertain. Having someone make the motion and having a second is not in any way meant to cut off discussion, in fact. Once we have a motion and a second, we will then have more discussion as anyone requires it, so. I would suggest that the motion might say, I've been thinking about it. I hereby move that the reopening timeline proposed by the superintendent be adopted. And that the superintendent be authorized to implement said timeline without the necessity for a further vote by the school committee. And the idea behind that being, you know, we have the details, we have the information. And the timeline has several different times and dates that are key. In that case, if the motion is accepted, we wouldn't have to have another meeting each time the next part of the timeline was begun.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, Bill, thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Heather, we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion, any questions, any comments that we need to include at this point before we take a vote? Mike?
Just want to make clear for people who haven't seen it, that the necessity to meet the ventilation and other requirements is also included in that.
Yes, yes, the, thank you, thank you, the, the timeline itself is, is dependent. On all of those safety measures, in particularly this evening, we've been talking about. The HVAC, the air purifiers, those kinds of important things, but at other meetings, if people were not able to watch. We've dealt with all other kinds of safety issues in the buildings and will continue to, the sanitizing, how things are cleaned, the PPE provided. Our nurse COVID leader, I believe, is that the term, Brian? Melissa Bednarzki has been working really hard, coming up with regulations, getting things ready in every building. Meeting with the boards of health again, as Brian has with his information to make sure that everything is safe. Because that has been our first priority and we're not losing sight of that, thank you, Mike. Jennifer?
Sorry guys, I can ask questions all night. I'm just wondering if we could maybe separate out the plans, if, if people are amenable to that. To talk about the priority populations and the October 20th date and then the, the full school returning. I think was October 26th, I'm not sure if I have that date correct. If people wanted to take two votes, I'm just throwing it out there, it's up to you guys. Or if you want to do it all as one package, I guess my, my question about the priority populations is if we had so. Less numbers of students returning, maybe we could get around that eating with masks off by providing much more than six feet of space between students while eating. So I'd be, I guess, interested in that being a solution, at least initially with the priority populations. But I'm not sure I have a solution for the, the full school in order to do that.
Well, I'm not, you know, I'm not attempting to influence people in their vote, but I think when I was envisioning it, I think. Even the. All district movement is still a hybrid model. So we still would only have a portion of the students in at a time and that would give us, when I was thinking of it and picturing it. I think that would give us a lot more space than we ordinarily have. And, and that would be able to be the social distancing that, as you say, is really important. I think it would give enough space for that, I think, at all of these points, I, I hope, Brian?
Yeah, so that, that really is baked into the plan and part of the reason Jennifer that I, I. Declined to build a third model for full in-person learning was. There was almost no place in the district where we could have all of our students in the building at one time. And expect to account for that need to be safely social, social distance. And your, your concern about eating is one of the primary things that we have. As a concern. For us to consider. As we're planning food service for in-person, even if it's a small number of kids, because they're all going to need to be supervised. In particular areas of the building, we have to make sure that. Teachers and paraprofessionals also have prep time and lunches. So while there's a lot of stuff to take into consideration there, the reason for not splitting up the. The movement through to hybrid is that again, it's all contingent upon having those safe spaces and, and, you know, we have, we have a tentative agreement to. Have a three-week turnaround time that we've talked about publicly in between school committee votes and I didn't want to have a school committee vote, I was hopeful that. Being transparent with. The Education Association being transparent with the public, being transparent with the, the school community would give us the, would, would give them confidence in me to be able to make decisions with the administrative team about. Next phases. With knowing that safety is our top priority, health and safety as a core value has guided this process to such a degree that. For six weeks, I've not been able to make a recommendation at all, you know, so that, that's not going to go aside because we're going to be like, yeah, we get to get kids in the building, let's go crazy and. Fire pathogens all over one another, that can't happen, we, you know, it's going to have to be really strict adherence and even if we were to go full hybrid. You know, that, that claim is correct, that we did it with, with six feet minimum social distance in mind as part of that and we can achieve that in hybrid, but we can't. In, with all of our students on campus. I think it would only be both 40% at a time.
Yeah, so just to clarify, you think that there'll be more than the six feet space between kids eating in a classroom? Is that, has that been like measured out or, you know, if you have half the students, does that make sense that they would be significantly spaced? And the air would be being cleaned and the air changes per hour would be all, you know, everything. Would be done and it would be further than six feet away. Eating with their masks off?
Yes.
Due to the fact that. It's unstable.
Yeah, and I, I like the idea actually of eating in classrooms now having the air purifiers with the, the technological capacity is actually going to be better. And, and I, I believe Joanne, if I'm not mistaken, we did get some for the cafeteria. The gymnasium, they can, they can really consume. A lot of material over a very large area, so we purchased a number of them and we got extras just in case some of them fail at some point. So we're very well provisioned with that technology. But now knowing that they're in the classroom, the classrooms might have, you know, the cleanest air, a cleaner air than the cafeteria might overall anyways, but. Yeah, all of that was, was measured out and that's part of the, how we made really the determination that. You know, all the best that we could do would be three feet and part of the reason that we didn't put in a full in-person plan until the pandemic was no longer a threat.
Bill?
I made the motion. With the understanding that the superintendent is going to be able to act on any problems. As we enter into this and I'm satisfied with that and secondly. to act on any problems as we enter into this, and I'm satisfied with that. And secondly, in doing it, I recognize that COVID is here. It's not going away. It's not going away next spring or next summer. It's going to be something that we have to learn to live with or around. And a vaccine will certainly help. But the fact is COVID is still there. And I don't think anybody's figured out how to eliminate it any better than the common cold. In fact, they're related. So, I mean, that's part of the reason for trying to get back into, it's not a normal situation, but trying to get back into a partially functional one that is starting to serve our principal population, which is our students, especially the young ones. So that's where I'm coming from. I don't need multiple motions to achieve that. I'm, I'm happy with one. Thanks. And thank you, Jennifer, for all of your good questions and concern to make sure that all of this is clear.
Yes, sorry, I'm asking a lot of questions. I just want to make sure that we're really having a very lengthy, thorough discussion.
Yeah, you definitely added items to the admin team agenda for sure. And that's not a bad, that's not a bad thing.
Cassie?
Um, I'm going to thank Jen because that was something I hadn't even concerned about the lunches. But I also want to just offer this perspective. And again, I'm not picturing the entire student body being back and framed in a classroom and eating unsafely. And I would hope that there would be a precedent sense that that wouldn't happen. But I also want us to just think, trying to hold this perspective that, you know, everything is opened up very slowly, especially in Massachusetts. Turn off my mic so I don't drop off. And at every opening, we've all kind of, I know I have held our breath about like, is this it? Is this when it's going to spike? And we're fortunate to live in an area where we are so safe. And I feel like the majority is about following, you know, safety precautions. And so, you know, when restaurants open back up, people still followed the safety precautions and we didn't see a spike. Restaurants and schools are completely different. I'm not trying to say that they're the same by any means. But I also want us to think about the fact that our schools have had to go through significant inspections and we have had to spend a significant amount of money, which we should have. I mean, thinking back, our schools probably shouldn't have been where they were in terms of ventilation, but we didn't know. And, and so I think that we should all try and, as scary as it is, because I'm right there with you, think about the fact that, you know, we didn't see a spike as businesses and restaurants opened and they didn't have to follow through with nearly as much safety precautions and inspections and updates as we are planning to do. That's all.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, in that case, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying "aye," waving something of that nature. Okay. I see seven. Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? I'm sorry, what?
I see one.
I just still have two questions. So I'm going to say no for now.
Do you want to say no or do you want to abstain? Your choice. You were muted.
Jen, were you asking if other people had questions still? I couldn't understand.
Sorry, my connection is super unstable. I said I'm saying no because I still have a lot of unknowns and a lot of questions.
And that's, that's fine. Absolutely.
Sorry, it was unstable. So I'm having internet trouble tonight.
Yeah, it helps the, the connections have their moments. So in that case, it passes with seven yes and one no. And I really, I appreciate all the questions. I appreciate all the ideas. It's, it's how we're able to accomplish what we have. I think, again, that, as Mike said, the working together, the community as a whole, the communities being willing to help fund these expensive renovations. It's been huge and really wonderful to see everybody working their best together. And we'll certainly revisit everything at, at every meeting from now on. We'll go back and review everything. But for this evening, it looks like being a special meeting. We don't have anything else. If people have agenda requests for the next regular meeting, that will happen, probably the agenda planning will be on the fifth. Jennifer, did you have something at the moment?
Yeah, I'm going to remember to turn off my video so you can maybe hear me.
Yeah.
I'd like to maybe have a presentation about what the learning will look like in the classroom. We've had a couple of teachers come forward and talk about that they'll be sitting at their desk at a computer and all the kids will be sitting at their desk with a computer and there won't be much interaction besides the computer, but they'll be kind of doing remote in the class. So I just want to make sure that the parents, the community, the kids coming in, that we really have a clear picture because that's all been sort of hearsay that we've been getting that information. So I just want to make sure that we expect, the expectations are appropriate and true as to what it's going to be like. So families can prepare their, their students as to what it's going to look like. It's not going to necessarily be what they left. And, you know, we haven't heard from admin exactly what that's going to look, look at, look like, but we've heard a lot from teachers mentioning things. So I just, I think we need to clarify.
Right. And I think that's an excellent point. I think probably there'll be a lot of variation depending on the age of the students and the particular class, type of class with older students. Brian, did you have something you wanted to say about that?
Yeah, I guess I would say that it's, there are elements of what Jennifer is saying that people are, are talking about and speculating. But to be honest, I don't know if for the next school committee meeting that we could do that because until we actually have the kids in person, you know, I don't think, I don't think anybody really, it's, it's all just speculation at that particular point or anticipation of these challenges. And it's really important to be able to think ahead. But yeah, we can do our best to do that, but we would really need to be able to consult with teachers. I, you know, I do know, because the primary delivery system will still be for those students who are at home, you know, using Google Classroom, that I, I think it's certainly reasonable to anticipate that kids in classroom may still have some screen time. I mean, it's not going to necessarily be some, but they would if they were in school full time and we were in a one-to-one situation because now they all have Chromebooks. So there are all, all of these benefits that came out of the pandemic really changing the way we deliver instruction and curriculum. And I think that that's something that's really important, that we continue to analyze and share thoughts and seek to make improvements to that over time. You know, being aware of screen time, I think is really important. Thanks, Jen.
Yes, and we'll make a note of that, too. And if people have other ideas, please let Brian, Cassie, or myself know. And then we'll put the agenda together probably Monday the 5th. The next two regular, least scheduled meetings will be October 13th. It will be virtual at 6:30. And October 27th, it will be virtual at 6:30. And just a note on that, in case people haven't been aware, at, at several points, we've talked about the fact that it, it would be really helpful if the school committee itself could be meeting in person. And it's not that we don't wish to do that, but at this point, with the, the limits on the number of people in a room and the size of the room, we can't be in person yet because if we were, we wouldn't be able to include the public. And that would really be a disservice to the community. So once they, the limitations are a little less strict, then we'll certainly be happy to do that. Yes, Bill?
It's possible that we could, that we could meet and the public could still observe as they are today. But all of that aside, I have another, another thing, just a technical point in terms of the letter to the commissioner from Brian. There were, and also in the plan itself, the question is, I hope you have extensive proofreaders when you, especially when you send something to the commissioner. There's a couple of places where they're, I'm sure they're just inadvertent typos. But for example, your first sentence in your letter to the commissioner is difficult to read because it's, and I don't want to belabor this, but just in the second line, "we anticipate provided in-person instruction for our students." I, that could be correct, but it, it may, it may be awkward. And then further down, there was another instance like that. So I just wanted to encourage us, because I, if he sends something to us and it's, and it's offbeat, then we can all chuckle at it.
Yeah.
So thank you if you'll just work on.
Yeah, no, Bill, and you're right. And that was the communicate, I didn't have that proofread. That was, in fact, that may have been the draft that I printed out and hastily emailed to him. So thank you for pointing that out.
Thank you. Cassie, did you have your hand up?
No, never mind. Fine.
Okay. Thank you. I believe that will do it for this evening. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Can I adjourn?
I think we got Bill and Mike. Does that sound about right? Okay, all those in favor? Looks like everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you again. I appreciate everyone's hard work.
Can I have supper now?
I think that's a great idea, Bill. Pet that dog a little more too while you're at it.
I will.
Thanks. Thanks, everyone.